Well, that's insane.
I'm just saying.
Where are you sitting at, Andy?
Uh, I think we're in.
Andy, you're not sitting here?
No, I'm here.
No, that's your own desk.
Okay. Excuse us while I play music and chairs. Okay. All set? Mr. Britcher, if you'd be so kind.
I would be so kind.
Elegance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, here it is. I just got it today, Don. I'll let you know what we need.
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, I need a minutes to be read, if you'd be so kind.
Roll call.
Roll call. Like I said, roll call.
President.
Michelle Harris.
Here.
Redstone.
Here.
Andy Moniz.
Andy here.
Mike Britcher.
Here.
Greg Sims.
Present.
Jeremy Rivas.
Here.
Seven present.
We need a minutes, if you'd be so kind.
No, if you were cool.
Oh, cool?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 22 budget hearing for our morning handshakes.
Second.
I have motion in the second. Everyone, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So I'll ask this out. First reading now.
The following appropriations have been brought to you for your consideration for readjustments in 2025 budget. The general fund salaries next to $13,037. Cumulation bridge furniture fixtures over $100 bucks, $1,500. Plan commission consultant, $35,000. Dorm water fund furniture fixtures over $100, $1,500. Prosecutor free trial furniture fixtures over 100, $10,000. JDC codes, reduction of $5,000 in salary. 2024 go bond, fractional additional $5,940,000. Consultant $560,000. Medical response core fund inter fund transfer, $126,365.37. Health insurance fund inter fund transfer, $5,188.53. First reading.
Hey, thank you. To the agenda.
Make a motion. Do we move that study up to the pass real quick and act that one out?
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your honor, if you'd be so kind to step up.
Certainly will.
Make a motion to approve the one, say aye. One, two, three, four.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
That's an easy one.
Thank you so kindly.
Oh, shout, thank you. Enjoy your evening. I hope it all goes into the center.
You leave me there. Back. I'll pull those in here. Commissioners.
Yeah, hang on a minute. Because it's not so broken.
Okay. We have additional five, 50 to 31, 200 consultants. Appropriations needed for facilities due repairs to JDC, Admin Building Courthouse, and one of the facility's front office.
So where do we have this total work at JDC?
So if you take a look at what we have here, for the JDC, there's about $3.5 million in worth that is going to be needed to be done there. We've got that already completed. That was already considered as part of the bond project when you were presenting for that. So with respect to that project, we've got some existing conditions that need to be corrected with respect to the chamber growth, the flat roof portion of the entryway needs to be replaced. The drainage system, masonry columns are to be replaced. Other systems are to be addressed and repaired as necessary. When we do those, we'll be repaired. The exterior brick and heathes, two exterior hollow metal doors will be addressed. Some of those are broken and not functioning properly, which will be a little bit of a difficulty. So the exterior needs to be worked. We've got a request for proposals that is put together for the joint ceiling and for some tuck point work to be done. Some electrical outlets. We are going to be taking a look at the boilers there. If those are going to be needed to be replaced, we're looking at probably an excess of $150,000 for that. We are putting together a request for proposals for heat pumps, which was the largest capital item that was considered as part of the budgetary process for the bond. We're looking at probably about $920,000 to $950,000 for that project in and of itself. That would include the building automation as well, as well as the water heat exchange system as well, and energy recovery system as well. So we are taking a look at a lot of the building systems as well as the interior of the building, which is worn and old if you've ever been in a building. You truly appreciate and understand that. As I said, the total cost of the projects we budgeted for was 3.5 million. We do think we'll realize some savings with respect to many other projects.
If you all look, you all might have seen, we see the Florida County Government's assessment submitted by the Board of Commissioners as well as the County Auditor's Office on page seven, under facilities. There's an additional breakdown of buildings, the envelope, the building system.
Where'd you say that was?
Page seven, under facilities.
There.
Is a detailed breakdown of the work that's needed to be done there.
My question for the jury, and I can ask what I wanted to answer about. When we do all this work, are we in good shape as we're building out? Are we not going to do it for 15 years or do we still have a lot of need?
We'll be in really good shape. There are some mission critical items that need to be addressed that we've already gotten. We're looking at design options for those with staff. Our staff is very happy about getting the work done there. They're elated to see a lot of the work being started, the design starting to unfold. So they're very happy about it.
It is probably out of the list of buildings that we have, that Joe provided, where it needs to be done. This is probably in the worst shape, which is understandable that it's never get to a, you know, we really haven't done much to that, to this structure since it opened up in 94 or 95. So, I mean, we're going 30 years with major components of the building not having been given a lot of attention for those last 30 years. And, you know, because we have children in this building, it's the sooner we get this addressing and properly, the better off we're all.
Well, that was the priority, the highway to the jail, the JDC. It's no surprise. Where are you getting the numbers from, Joe, with the cost?
So the cost, some of those are based on some estimates, preliminary estimates that we've gotten from different vendors. We did reach out to one vendor as far as the heat pump replacement, and we're looking at probably, budget wise, probably about $950,000 for that. So, and that's with the building automation. We're replacing out of the 44 heat pumps, we're replacing approximately 40, so the majority of those. And we even had one onsite. Those heat pumps have been causing a lot of damage to the ceiling tiles in that area. A lot of the repairs that, for that specific project, will be done and won't really impact a lot of the staff or the residents there because a lot of that's going to be done overhead.
So are you just piecing all this together or is that from you just looking at it different?
Well, yeah, a lot of the work is basically a lot of maintenance. A lot of maintenance work is not, there is not a lot of construction per se within the scope of any of these projects. So, you know, like I said, it's mostly a lot of maintenance and stuff that needs to be replaced, you know, after life. So we're replacing the existing heat pumps, for instance, with more and more moderate heat pumps, but that will function with our existing systems.
One of the things you said, Joe, was that it may be a little less, are you getting different bids from different vendors?
Well, we're not, when it comes to bidding, we're trying to keep the process open and fair. We're not trying to get, you know, stuff that's fifty. We know it's in excess of $150,000. We're just going to get some consulting quotes, so we're not paying a consultant to give us an opinion on cost. So we're just reaching out to a vendor and asking them, will you give us an opinion on what this would cost for replacing pumps? And we would need to reach out to engineers to kind of put the components together for the bid specs. That would be part of the soft cost for the project.
And that's what, I mean, you're talking about, I mean, you guys know that aside, I think you guys are working on, I don't know, we approved bond, we had this conversation that we were going to start with the highway garage, and then with the jail, and then with the JDC priority, and then about this road. But to me, these are the large capital projects which should be tackled, and we've had a partner at Skilman the whole time. These are estimates, you're saying you're calling a vendor and trying to get a quote. I mean, who are you calling to do this business? I mean...
Yeah, we would reach out to the same vendors that Skilman would reach out to if they were looking to scope something out of this size.
Why are we, why are we now deviating from, you know, Skilman was presenting originally on the JDC, now they're not, you can piece those together. I mean, to me, your facilities, I don't see you guys overseeing large capital projects. That's my opinion, that we should be making sure we're tackling this right, right budget and in there look at the scope, this meeting was a priority in third line. Let's make sure we're not missing anything. And I'm not undervaluing, you know, underestimating your value, but we have a lot of buildings to be, you know, why do we throw Skilman aside, let them finish? They were presenting, and I thought they were part of the whole bond. They have the vendors to call, they have people, you know, to meet them in there, let them start, you know, writing this up, the scope, you know, and then start putting it out whatever they do, whatever percentage, you know, when they start getting into it with their engineers. I don't know why we're changing our process all of a sudden on this. This was supposed to be capital. We're, you know, I don't want us getting over things, missing things, coming back, and you say, I need $2 million in a year or two, you know, this was the cover of the bid. JDC was next, get it, it's a little bit there, like I said, Commissioner, let's get in there, make sure that we're pulling it back and doing all the work now, not going back. And it, to me, if it takes most of this money, and it does, I'd move on from there, but...
Well, if I, if I may, if you're sinister, if I may, I'd like to answer that question. I had Joe approach me and said, hey, look, I believe we can do this internally and save approximately $300,000 by doing it internally. And I know that when the commissioners originally, back in 2021, when we put together the facilities department, when it was re-overall, was with the idea that we could eventually do projects like this internally and save a lot of money.
I don't think this is a large issue, but I know where you're going, yes.
Yeah, but I, I think that's where, Jeremy, we may have a difference of opinion, and I don't consider this a large project. It's, much of it is, Joe has touched on, is replacing elements or parts of the building that are already there. We're not designing a new wing of it, we're not putting a roof on it, we're not, you know, doubling its size, its worth footage in any way. I don't think that this is a large project. I mean, $3,500,000 is a lot of money, but...
We don't know, maybe that's five million, though. I mean, how do the professionals go in there and make sure we're not missing? They, I don't see the maintenance.
Yeah, I agree, we shouldn't be missing anything, but I have confidence in our staff that they aren't missing anything. And put yourself in our position. If we have our facilities director coming, we can handle this internally and save this $300,000. As a commissioner, do I say, no, I don't believe you? I don't have enough, you know, I don't have enough trust in you to allow you to, well, okay, if you believe you can take it on, take it on, it's going to save us $300,000.
Well, it costs a million in the end, you're going to miss the opportunity in that.
Well, if...
We have a process, we have a team that I thought was part of this whole thing going to the bond, that's all I'm saying.
There was never any discussion, nor did you see anything in any meeting minutes, of any meeting that we had discussing that bond, whether it was on board commissioners or on the council, or it says Skilman was part of this.
They were presenting, they were presenting the preliminary on the JDC.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm going to say something for the record. I'm a little concerned that we're up here peddling a certain vendor for this, for this work.
It's not a certain, it's been a partner.
Well, that has been uncomfortable.
It's been a partner since on all of our facilities.
And I don't have a complaint, and I don't have a complaint with them. But when our facilities director, Jeremy, who you helped hire, are saying, we can handle this internally. Now, why would he, why would he come to me and put that obligation or that burden on him if he felt he couldn't do it?
We have a lot of buildings. I, to me, this was, Skilman was part of, been part of all of our facilities.
I get that.
All these, all the bonds.
I get that.
How much have we done, Commissioner, over the last, whatever, five, six years? We've had a professional alongside. Why, why now in the last $6 million, we gotta deviate from that? Let's finish the work we started here. They were part of the bond process. I'm not comfortable now thinking that we can't go save $300,000.
You know, the other thing I'd like to interrupt you on, my idea is that when Skilman gave her last report, and they, some reports that they had done, they had gone through one to one vendor, and they had thought of the best possible, and they showed the savings of money, that's why I asked you, sir, Mr. Wood, why, how are you going to save this money in that regard? You say, Commissioner, that's a $330,000 savings approximately, if we take a few, and that estimate is given by Hossler.
That's a what?
You said, we save $300,000. How would we save that?
Well, you have to pay Skilman something for the service, where you're not paying that.
What's the $550,000 for consultants for?
That's for consultants, that's off cost, which...
Would be...
That was in the original proposal, they analyzed. That would be for designing, engineering, anything that needs to be done every time.
It's Skilman provides, so that's down to $250,000.
But that's certainly, that's certainly, Skilman would provide. Can I ask a question? Was this, when you guys originally came up with this, and Skilman didn't, did present with you guys, wasn't Skilman involved in it? Skilman was supporting there? Skilman was presenting on the jail specifically, they weren't presenting necessarily on, you ever...
But didn't they go through, they go through the facility, you know, list of needs and stuff like that?
They went through with our staff at JDC, right? Yes.
Okay, so Skilman was involved. I just wanted to make sure. To me, and I'm saying that as more of, they were involved and had already looked it over, as far as I was aware, yeah.
Just preliminary stuff, yeah.
I just disagree with you. It is a savings, I love that. Obviously, there, if there's a risk...
Yeah.
That it could be more.
Well, you know, we had held several meetings with staff at JDC. We've had meetings with our staff and their staff to address their priorities, their concerns, their major life safety issues, their mission critical issues. We have addressed all of that within the scope of the work that we're looking at.
And I think, Jeremy, you brought up, you know, having a professional staff take a look at this. I believe we do. I have that kind of confidence in our staff, you know, that qualifies them to take on a project of this size and scope. I certainly, I certainly wouldn't be, I certainly wouldn't be supporting if I didn't think, you know, why would I set our entire, our entire facilities department up to fail? And this, quite honestly, and I mean, with all due respect, this is a commissioner's decision.
Nah, I don't entirely believe so.
Yeah, well...
And I'll make a motion to deny this additional until Skilman comes up with a further scope on this project.
Skilman's not going to come up with a further scope on this project because there won't be a contract to say...
I have a motion.
I have a motion. Can I get a second? Would you state your motion or...
Motion that we deny the additional until Skilman comes back, so, you know, they were part of the additional scope, that they have been a partner in all the bonds that we've done, that they continue to finish this work on this bond. This is the next priority on the list that we bonded for, and we need to make sure we're covering it all, not looking for a cost saving, that's a risk, that could end up costing us more down the road.
Mr. Wood, you motion?
Yeah, motion to deny until Skilman gets there, that's the team's work on...
Are you...
Are you with JDC?
So, we were just talking about JDC, but they're asking to move 5.9, so there's other...
That's, that's another motion, that's what I was asking.
So this is only about JDC?
Well, you know, there may not be anything left. JDC may cost $6 million.
It may cost, it may cost less than what we have done here, even. Ladies and gentlemen, look, Skilman is attached to the jail, and they were attached to the Memorial Enhouse for a reason. Those were very large, complex projects. The reason they're not attached to this is because at least two out of the three commissioners believe, along with the facilities director's recommendation, that we can handle this internally. Now, again, this building is really important to us, you know, in the number of buildings that we have, it ranks right up there at the top. We can't afford to keep badness around. We have children there. We need to get to business there.
I don't know why it hasn't been done already.
I have a quick question. So when you said that you were going to vendors, sorry, when you said that you were going to vendors, and vendors, Skilman previously, so those are vendors that have been working on other buildings of ours?
That they have done in the past, yes.
Okay, so you, we have a relationship with them outside of Skilman?
Yes.
Okay, and then you've had bids on those for each of these?
Quotes.
Okay, proposals, clauses, yes. So then, when they come back, do you go for a second if you don't like the numbers? Or how, I mean, how does that...
Typically, typically, if we're getting quotes, we'll request quotes from at least three vendors, or at least three hundred quotes from three vendors. If that exceeds the $150,000 threshold, that's the only way to request a quote for that.
Okay, and then, so I just want to clarify that, making sure that these vendors are not going to say, well, Skilman's not doing this, or not part of this, so we're not going to do it.
Correct.
Okay.
Because you got to remember, people in construction, I made construction, you know, for 30 years, I'm a personal friend of Scott Cherry, say it, right here, admit it, personal friend of Scott, boss Scott, at our Doolin School, did the jail. But I will tell you, he's not guaranteed every job we do. If this is a job that we can save $300,000, then we have to do what's best for us. They're big boys, just like I'm a big boy, and I would have bid something, and I lose a project. Looking at this one, you know, the reason why he's on the jail or he was at the garage is because those were ground up, or the jail's a very complex project, but I'm going to tell you, you know, boiler replacement, generators, fans, this is a lot of plug and play type stuff, guys. I mean, if you want to pay me $150,000, I'll do it right now, quit my job, and I'll do it. I mean, seriously, it's, you know, construction managers have their place in our industry, no doubt, for municipalities, for schools, but if we have a competent, Joe, I think you're very competent, seeing what you, what you posted, I am 100% fine with you, you being a facilities manager doing this, and at the end of the day, Commissioner Biggs said it, he's responsible for it. So if you guys fail, it's on you guys, right?
And we got it.
It's not, we're a little bonded. We improved this, and I didn't know what we were improving it for. Yeah, but we'll wait to see how long this last $5 million, you know, we may just do it in house.
But isn't that good for us to save money? I mean, we don't know if it was Skilman. Like I said, I'm a personal friend with the guy, but like, I would tell him straight to his face, he would say, here, Scott, you know, if I can save $300,000, sorry, bud, you're not getting the job. He's a big boy, he understands, that's how business is. To pay, to spend three, an additional $300,000 is absolutely ludicrous.
I swear, we're not saying there's an additional, if he's come up with a projection that he can save $300,000, I don't know where, I mean, he's called a few people that...
No, but that's what I'm saying, is his, his fees to run this project would be, would they be $300,000? They'd be $300,000. To be a construction manager, $300,000, $150,000, I don't care, $200,000, that's a lot of money for this project. I mean, we don't need construction managers if we have, you know, a very good facilities manager to do these projects. If we, if we don't, then quite frankly, we have to run facilities manager, because these are types of projects that you should be able to do. And counsel, look, I probably know Scott Cherry better than anybody on the other side. I like Scott Cherry. I think we went to high school together at the same time. And I like the job that Skilman has done with it. This is not about Skilman. This is about using our facilities department on a project where it can save the taxpayers some money. That's what this is about. It's not about anything else.
You're estimating, like cutting them off, but we don't, I mean, you got $560,000 for consultants. You've got this list, you've called a few people, we don't, you're estimating that you can, we have a track record of a partner that has been, what are we at, Commissioner, and our facilities over the last five, six, seven years have used expense, and they've been a partner on all of it.
Jeremy, to be fair, because...
Why are we deviating at the end?
To be fair, you are 100% right, but to be fair, and I would say something, it's probably going to be a challenge, this is what it is. They offer very little value, construction managers, at the end of the day. If you have a good general contractor, you hire a general contractor, you don't need a construction manager. That's what Indiana does, okay? Really, they don't, they're still going to ask for $500,000 for engineers. Skilman doesn't engineer anything. They don't, they get the bids, they prepare, they send them out, and that's it. They overlook, they put a guy in a trailer, and, you know, if you have a good general contractor or a good facilities manager, I'm very comfortable with doing this project without Skilman. I, I think I'm stunned by your reaction. I'm just, I thought that, you know, kudos to the facilities department and board commissioners for recognizing it, we're going to save the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I don't, and I would hope that by now, that you would have a little bit more, Jeremy, a little bit more confidence in the board commissioners and the facilities department, that we're not going to get ourselves pigeonholed into something that ends up blowing up in our...
I could say, then I could say, because we have a partner that has a track record that if we were to use, then to finish what we started, we could save $500,000 because we're going to get something. So we can save $500,000 if we finish this the way we started.
And to be fair, Skilman, listen, I did a $180 million project at Doolin, okay? Skilman was our construction manager. When you start getting, when you got into Liberty, okay, which was an eight-year-old building, seven-year-old building, the stuff that they came up with, it was 30, 40, 50% over budget. So when you go into these buildings, now this being a relatively new building, '94, '95, we shouldn't have those problems, but did they keep the actual drawings? You know, you open up a roof, you can, you can, you can get into anything. So...
But those costs still come back on us.
100%.
Other jobs don't, or Skilman.
Right.
Is your concern, Jeremy, that, or your counsel, that the detention center might not get the 3.5, like some of it might be special?
No, I think we're, my concern is we're not, we're going to miss something. We're going to try to piece bill to save, and we're not going to let a bigger professional that has more assets, more connections, or... How many facilities you got to run? How many people have you got to manage on a daily basis, Joe? You know, taking on a $6 million construction project, no, I never thought that was what we built the park for, but we did. It was maintenance, it was because people were screwing us for changing filters, and you remember all of it. This wasn't about construction, this was about maintenance.
I'll talk about the conversations that commissioners have.
It's that we're going to miss something and come back, and it's going to cost additional money because we, when we had it open, you know, or...
But when we miss something, it's still going to be a cost to us, whether it's...
Not if they were already on site, and they are, they found it, and when they had something, you know, open, they were doing it, it...
That's what I'm asking, I just tried to clarify. But Jeremy, I think the point is, are you suggesting that Skilman never, even Skilman never misses anything?
No.
I have a question. It says to repair the loom back, unless I'm mistaken, work started on that already?
Yep, the work on that is completed, yes.
Okay. And you had the funds for that?
No. Have they, have they paid that? I don't believe it.
Is there a late fee with that now?
No.
How did you go about figuring work done without the funding?
The commissioners approved that. And it was one of the mission critical components that you need to get... And it was one of the mission critical components that he needed done, as opposed to danger in the employees and, or the bullser, because they're well, not necessarily the public, but definitely the staff.
Oh, we had a motion, well, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck with another question, Commissioner, you said that two of the three commissioners proposed this, why wasn't it 3-0, if this was so good?
You'd have to ask Commissioner Rick.
Was there any conversation in that when, when she opposed it? I mean, she's not here, unfortunately, but do you remember any, like, what she just said, no, she, there was no discussion on why she disagreed?
She actually didn't, she actually didn't bring that, the attention that she brought it to Joe's attention, that she, you could tell by what she was saying to him, that she didn't approve it, she, she wasn't supportive of it.
I, I'll second Jeremy's, just to get a vote.
We have a motion to second to deny?
I still don't understand what, so.
Any further discussion?
The 5.6 is for JDC, it's the ANX, it's these other couple things, but what is that about 60 for consultants, that's what I'm getting at? It's for soft costs, engineering, architectural design, and stuff like that.
Do we know who's doing that?
I'm sorry.
Do we know who's doing that?
It could be either publicly or DLC or construction company, one of them.
Are they doing stuff for JDC?
They're, they're currently doing other work for the county.
No, but is that 560 to pay for work at JDC?
Not, not all JDC, that's all, all of them.
So, there's gonna be oversight, there's gonna be some oversight, like whoever, my name is well.
For a hearing.
Double checking to make sure that, and again, I can't, kind of terrible, for bidding, stuff like that, yeah.
And I, I wanna point something out, though, just for you to consider. You know, as you know, you're, I'm in the business as well, I mean, I work for an architect and engineer, I might be surprised to know that, that I would safely say the majority of municipal projects that go on are not, you know, are, are, are a noticeable percentile. They're managed within, internally. They're not, somebody like Skilman is not always brought in. And then, and again, I have absolutely no problem with Skilman, they wouldn't be on the sites they're on now if I did, or if the commissioners did. But I, we don't, I love the work that they do, but this was a way to save some money and give our facilities department an added, you know, we get a, get an added value to them, what not? Especially considering what we're all looking at. Here, and we've all been talking about it the last year, things are getting tight.
Well, and I had that here first, though, Joe, whenever it was, a month or so ago, and this is some of my concern too, I believe this was supposed to be capital projects, I mean, you're talking about landscaping, front plaza landscaping, using bond money for.
Right, so part of that landscaping is erosion control for the JDC. So, the rear, rear portion of that building, there's a lot of erosion in the back, so we, and I are.
It's an administrative building.
I'm sorry?
This has administrative.
And we have similar issues here with downspouts that drain into a street that drain back into the building.
I mean, that seems more like maintenance, not something that would spend, yeah, I.
Well, 6.5 million dollars is mostly, a lot of this maintenance.
Absolutely.
There's deferred maintenance that hasn't been done.
That's my concern, is we're not, we're, we should be going after large capital stuff, others, the big stuff over there, going after big spots.
And I, I believe we're addressing all of that.
Landscaping doesn't seem like big capital.
6.5 million dollars.
Landscaping doesn't seem like big capital, this is.
Are you saying landscaping should be done internally as well?
Yeah, I think a lot of this stuff, maintenance, this was, to me, so we don't come back and get, you say, hey, we're 3 million dollars because we missed something, it's 3 million, because, yeah, we gotta replace this, this was to protect us from getting big bills coming back down the road.
We're giving you mission critical components.
Going in our priorities that we talked about.
But I think, you know, Joe can speak up in any case, but I think one of the reasons why those sorts of items were included, but quite honestly, we're working on a budget that's in, that's, that's really put us in a failing state to keep up with everything that needs to be done with every single property that we have. So, when we do get the opportunity to address some of it, stuff like stormwater drainage and, of course, drainage on, on a property that maybe undermined the foundation or.
Why are we in a failing state, what are you talking about?
Because we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not giving the, the, an adequate amount of money to address what our facilities, our facilities need each and every year. We're just not, Jerry.
So, stuff like that, Dwight, again, maybe he should be working on that kind of stuff, and we, we let the professionals out there that are finishing, that have been part of the bond. I mean, if you have CCD, what do you have in CCD? And, uh, you have two, two, you started the year with an extra 2.5 million dollar fire, why don't facilities tackle this stuff? Why are we in a, by failing state when we've got 2.5 million dollars in CCD funds?
Well, I think that, though I'm sure that, that money set was allocated beginning of the year, it's been, it's spent in another place.
That's unallocated, I believe.
Or unallocated, that's, that's unallocated right now.
In CCD, we started.
I don't know, I haven't seen the budget update or whatever. But we're, we're.
So, we're in failing state, thinking.
We're only, we're only, we're only in, we're only in June.
That was carryover.
Well, you know, I, I don't, I don't manage my finances that way, where I take everything right up to the line, even though, you know, I, you know, we.
You just said we're in a failing state.
We've got a good part of the year left here.
You said we're in a failing state, you have to make this, we're killing the market, we've got.
We are in a failing state, there is definitely enough.
3 million dollars sitting there.
We are, we are in a failing state when it comes to our buildings, yes. If we, if we, if we don't reinvest, we certainly are, and that's why, quite honestly, we've ended up having to bond. Because we haven't stuck enough money in over the years to prevent sort of these things to, to get into a failed state.
So, I, sorry, I have a quick question. So, I just want to make sure, because obviously, I am new to the council, but it seems like over the last over many years, we have continued to Band-Aid things, that's what we did, more than Band-Aid, and now we are in a state where it can no longer be Band-Aid, right, I mean, like a reconstruction surgery. So, if we continue to Band-Aid everything, we're gonna be in this position five years from now, next year, if you're active, you're active, you're active, right? So, we want to make sure that everything, I think that's what you're saying, right, you want everything done correctly the first time, so we're not back in this position.
Exactly, part of, part of that is, is making sure that we are doing the investment so that we were protecting our budget, so that we were not going after the CCD money. We're getting the critical issues.
And you are saying that this can be done in-house, and you're saying you have confidence in them, and you feel like there should be someone supervising. So, I guess that in some sort of compromise or negotiation, we would, we could maybe let them try this project, and if it implodes or explodes, then we can say, going forward, we're using Skilman. We trusted you, you said you could do it, it didn't work out the right way, and so going forward, we're gonna use Skilman. We appreciate that you tried, but it didn't work out, so we tried, we failed, and that's fine, moving forward, we're gonna use Skilman.
But it's not fine, because then you're down the money if it didn't work out. That's the downside of that.
I understand that, but they, the commissioners also understand.
Comms, it, look, it's, it's, it's up to you, do, do what you would like to do, but nobody can tell you right now, hey, nobody is gonna force me to sign a contract with Skilman, when I know we don't need to sign one. Now, we're, we're either tied with money or we're not. We either, we either believe our facilities department that they can handle this or we don't. It is as simple as that, but I cannot, and nor would you if you were sitting in my chair, I am not gonna have the county council of Porter County dictate to me what contracts I sign. I'm just not gonna allow that, neither would you.
And that's insurance, is that what you're doing with us?
No, absolutely not, you don't sign the contract.
But if you can, you do what you need to do.
No, I, no, you were getting, we went through this with bond, with, going through bond council, that what, what these monies were gonna be spent on. You're telling me you're gonna hire somebody to oversee that project, I'm telling you, you're not gonna do that. I, I, I don't care, you know, I, I just keep this in mind, that's the juvenile services center. If we keep kicking this can down the road, you would, you greatly enhance the opportunity of one of these kids getting.
All right, all right, Commissioner, we, we couldn't tell you this a long time ago, too, why, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't. We have it for the last.
I'll, I'll, I'll read the full numbers, then. Okay, here, here's what we got. We have a known factor in Skilman, an unknown factor in Joe's capacity.
Your employee, your employee.
At this, if you're lucky, sir. At the capacity that's probably a little bit more than he's done at this point in time. My only concern is having, knowing that we've done with Skilman in the past, knowing what they've done. I had asked Joe for an electrical outlet, if he had time, we put it in at the, uh, dude, extension office, it took three weeks, I even approached you, sir, and said, I had asked Joe to replace the electrical, and I know he was doing a couple of other stuff going around. And that's just one of the concerns. I'm not saying he can't do it, but I'm saying not to be in over his head, if he feels he can do it, and he's shown he's done some things, you know, pretty good, and he brought up the, uh, health department, he did not, now, who oversaw that?
We did.
Who did that, again? Who did the work on it?
We're mostly constructional, they were the general contractors.
Yeah, the general contractor. So, there are some concerns, understand that, that's primarily where we're at, the concerns, that if it does not come to fruition with you doing it, it will cost us more money, okay? And there's, and there's also generally concern with that, because this is something bigger than you've ever tried before. So, you, you must understand that, it's not, not a stab at you, so much as this is something bigger, and, you know, if you're, it's great, it does save us 300,000 dollars plus. And yes, we are tight for money, and we have to know what's, what's gonna go down with SB1, that's another story, I just want to touch on that real quick, but that is a concern more than anything else. One concern is money, the other concern is getting it done right, okay? So, it comes down to this to a vote, and we have the vote, and we have a second, roll call, please. Could you please refresh me just to make sure what we're voting on?
Sorry, right off the bat, additional.
Of the whole, the whole 560 and the 5 million, 940,000 dollars.
Madam, are they supposed to be taken as one at a time, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
They have to be taken one at a time?
Well, then it is.
You need to redo the, a motion reverse to 560. We're, we're. We can vote out in separate, make a motion for both, I can make a motion to deny the 560,000 dollars to consultants, and then after that vote, I'll make another motion to deny it.
Okay, so we're adjusting the motion, so, can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Are you reading none? I'm sorry. Okay. If you have a discussion, if you have a question, now, please ask.
This is, yeah, I mean, I don't see a no, but which way?
Okay. You're curious.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
So, we can see after agreeing to deny.
Correct.
560,000 only.
The, yeah, the 560, okay.
Correct.
Madam, water.
Mike Frickner.
I'm voting to.
Deny.
Approve.
The denial, Mike. You're voting for the denial.
Uh, Jeremy, he's got his own vote.
Okay, I'm voting for, then I vote, I'm not denying that.
Okay.
Whatever that is, just puts a yes.
Then that would be a no.
No.
Voting no against.
Yeah, that, that would be, you're, you would be voting no, because you're voting to give them the money, that would be a no, is that correct, sir?
I am.
Am I correct in understanding that?
Voting against the motion.
He's voting against the motion.
Right.
So, that would be a no, okay. So, one.
Andy Bassett.
You say your vote on this, sir? Yes, sir. Okay, I'll stick your down. Uh, yes.
Your's motion to deny.
No, my motion, uh, I can refuse myself, I'm.
You're not voting to deny it, you wanna know, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm voting no.
Russ Stone.
No.
Michelle Harris.
No.
Andy Boson.
No.
Jeremy Reva.
Yes.
Greg Spence.
Yes.
Five two.
Motion to deny the 5.9 million.
Well, we need to finish this one because we still have a motion.
I got a motion on the floor to deny the 5.9 million. For the taxes services.
Second.
Madam, are you ready to say your, your decision, please?
Well, you have.
I have a motion on the floor to deny the 5.9 million.
Jeremy, can anyone else think five two?
Hold on, hold on, just, oh, okay, so what do we need, Madam?
Are you saying we have to address the 560 with an approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, now, now, I started my own, I mean, I put a motion on the floor to finish what my original motion was, and I do have a vote, I agree, huh?
Motion can't.
So, I.
But no one made the motion pass.
I, I, I think that, in my legal opinion, it's appropriate for the council to vote on Jeremy's second motion. And then if someone wants to make an additional motion after that, on approving the additionals, one or both, that can be done.
That's on the 560.
Well, the 560 already been voted on.
560 already been voted on, we're talking about 5,940,000.
On, on, approved it, 560, yes. What I'm saying is, is, I, I think legally, that I'm comfortable with the council voting on Jeremy's second motion to deny.
The 5.9, okay.
Anybody deny it? You can all agree with me to deny 5.9, but it gets back to the consultants, it gets further, you know, understanding what the true stuff is, but.
So, are you re, are you rescinding your motion now?
What's the matter?
Just making sure everybody's on the same page here, okay? Okay, so, we have a motion to deny the 5.9 million, and we have a second.
Yeah.
So, if you vote yes, you are denying the motion, everybody understand that one?
No, it's the same.
Well, then you agree with the denial.
If you're voting yes, you agree with the denial.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, if you're reading yes to the vote, okay. Roll call, please, that's all that.
Andy Bassett.
Yes.
Russ Stone.
No.
Michelle Harris.
No.
Andy Boson.
No.
Jeremy Reva.
Yes.
Greg Spence.
Yes.
Four three. My first.
You break, yeah, brother. You count, Mike, I don't care what they say, you count, go ahead and vote, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
I second the motion.
560,000 to consultants.
I second.
We have a motion to second, uh, approve 560 to consultants? Roll call, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Russ Stone.
Yes.
Michelle Harris.
Yeah.
Andy Boson.
Yes.
Jeremy Reva.
No.
Greg Spence.
No.
Mike Frickner.
Yes. Any questions?
Madam, water?
Yeah, Andy Bassett.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve the 5.9 to potential services?
Second.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Michelle Harris.
Yes.
Andy Boson. Jeremy Reva.
No.
Greg Spence.
No.
Mike Frickner.
Yes.
Andy Bassett.
No.
Russ Stone.
Yes.
Well, congratulations, sir.
Joe, can you give us the whole council, every time that you sign a contract, that the 560 and the 5.9, can you, can you send a list of, you know, to mod that contract and use my book?
Yes. Well, I, I would sign the contract, I would be.
Well, I understand that, yes.
Your request should go to the commissioners.
What that?
Your request for that information should go through the.
I'll tell you now.
Wait, maybe, it works on it.
But your request will come to us.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, consul.
Okay, moving right on. We're still up here, what? Well, if you put, there's so many questions, who's that person? Director Lee Childers, are you, gee, come on down, this is really dangerous. We have a motion to transfer $10,000 from 4510 data processing equipment to 1130 overtime, that's needed for required training for sheriff P1 software, sir.
Oh, boy.
Need help.
So, this is, I just figured out that this is a new software for the sheriff's department, and while he changes the recording along with training, and I think he can take higher budget. So, it's a, it's a cover all day.
Is this ongoing, or is it already done?
It is finished.
How's your name?
It is one time.
Why is the sheriff's name, Bruce?
Wouldn't it be 911?
Oh, it says sheriff on there, no, it's a similar system, it could be, either way. I don't think he's one. Why, why are you paying for that?
I keep that.
I get your question, and I agree with your question.
Either way, it's kind of money.
Well, it depends if the 911's coming out of the search warrant or not, because that's not a county, that's a search warrant.
I used to judge that, maybe this could come out of there?
I'm saying, those are options.
That's what I'm saying, though.
Are you saying, look at that, is that, is that, well, I know we've been operating on that fund a lot. Are you saying, look at that? Is that, is that, well, I know we've been operating on that fund a lot more.
Mr. Trump has to talk to Andrew Boddard, too. He's here for nine one one.
Can we take ten thousand dollars from you and give it to Lee?
This is a transfer.
Good enough. Really, both of them wasn't given. I think he shook his head, yes. No, this, no, one of those, okay?
But to be clear, this, you've been working on the system for nine one one in the sheriff's department.
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve it. A second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is there not another fund?
Probably.
If you take it out of nine one one? Yeah, I mean, I, the auditors could find us a couple funds, I'm sure, either.
Well, the sheriff has multiple funds on him. But this is up to you guys.
I mean, if you could, you could table it until you...
Well, we got a motion out after the drop.
I mean, it's, it's fine. I'm just, I feel like...
If we take it out of the sheriff's nine one one, I feel like it'll just come to us.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
No.
But no, motion carries. Stormwater and full chairs.
Do you guys just get normal chairs?
Fifteen hundred dollars, twenty-four, no, furniture fixtures over one hundred dollars.
You voted for it.
Bring the motion to approve the fifteen hundred dollar additional for the new chairs.
I can't, I'm sorry, Andy, I couldn't hear.
I made a motion to approve the additional appropriation for new chairs for staff and conference room.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If you care, is it mortal chairs, not the tiny, just roll? There's no leaves or, you know, to make remote buttons on the arms or anything? So, well, there is a curiosity, which, how are the old chairs?
Uh, I think one came from the old courthouse. Used to be a jury chair, a few secretary. I got pictures.
Although the pictures were shown earlier?
Yes.
I think was, next question, that they ran Lincoln staff here or something.
George Washington, actually.
George Washington, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve fifteen hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Andy Vasquez.
Yes.
Redstone.
Yes.
Michelle Harris.
Yeah.
Andy Bosak.
Yes.
Jeremy Reva.
Yes.
Greg Spence.
Yes.
Mike Furtner.
Yep.
No, I can sit down.
We have an additional thirty-five thousand to thirty-one two hundred consultants. Appropriation need to cover professional services to the remainder of the year.
Is that what you're for the data center?
No, not exactly.
You mean, not exactly, sir?
So this year, we have a lot of initiatives. We're doing one in the update on the UVO. It's had, I believe, thirty-nine amendments since its vouch in twenty oh seven. I think a couple of them made it in there and then it didn't. So what public development developers and everybody has to do, they go to our website to see the UVO. It's in current form since twenty oh seven. I think I go to another page, it's got a bunch of amendments. It makes the thing very confusing for even more experienced people to go through. So the person I hired is a contract employee. His name's Earth, who used to be the planner in the city of Orange for many years. Now he's retired. And so I brought him in as a contract employee to, number one, do that. Number two, we're preparing new amendments for the UVO. We have a new bridge out there called Arden Minions, as well as personal soldier. Personal soldier will be ruled out to the planning commission, but they're first, this next meeting this week. And we'll take the planning commission next month to get a resolution and send commissioners to add it to it. Second, in addition to anything through the data center, we are also looking at quite large submissions that exceed five hundred lots. And so having this person on board is, uh, is, is helpful to get through that, because we're dealing with these day-to-day things with people doing some submissions and things like that. And yes, the data center does take a lot of time. Everybody goes out and, since we all know it's a process, we have to look at the amendment that the petitioner has offered to us. We make comments to it. Right now, we're dealing with the sixty-six page document that they're proposing as an ordinance, for example. So this staff member that I assigned, Andy, who's in charge and creates the sheet, we make our comments. So to answer your question, pretty much what I just said is what this particular lobby is doing in force. We also have another person, Rich Hudson, a lot of you know. He's been here many years, so he's also a contract employee. He's a registered lands lawyer. We use him a lot of time to do due diligence on legal descriptions and like. So in a nutshell, very briefly, that's what we have, we do contract employees. I don't receive current state parent actors this year, because we're making this big cut this year. And I do want to get you all straight about, I think, I think everybody deserves to have that.
Just to make this particularly clear to everyone in the audience who are on the council, if the, this amount of thirty-five thousand is approved, in no way is this council approving or is this approving the data center?
Correct, correct. Okay, this is our duty diligence.
This is our duty diligence and part of the process. This is not to move the data center. It could be to move the data center, but it's to set up. Right, and that's basically what I just said. We are, ultimately, it's the commissioners that decide. Right, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't voting to move the data center in some way, shape.
No way.
No.
Again, I would also like to add, all my requisitions or appropriations I'm requesting, like, are coming from our own ones. Not one of those coming from the justice.
Thank you. Now, I agree with the, we have a motion on that round.
I don't want to be...
Okay, I give a motion to approve the additional thirty-five thousand.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Michelle Harris.
Yeah.
Andy Bosak.
Yes.
Jeremy Reva.
Yes.
Greg Spence.
Yes.
Mike Furtner.
Yep.
Andy Vasquez.
Yes.
Redstone.
Yes.
So the motion carries, thank you. Transfer fifteen thousand from eleven two hundred hourly to thirty-two two hundred consultants. Transfer needed to cover professional services to the remainder of the year. Are we taking these consultants as an ad needed basis, or are they getting flat fee each twenty-five thousand with?
Every two weeks, they turn in a itemized invoice, shows every hour they work every day along. They get paid by the hour.
Does it take by the hour? Are you taking it out of hourly, putting it in the consultants?
There are certain limitations. I don't know the other years.
Oh, it's a hour, okay.
It kind of comes out.
They're probably on a W.
Maybe not, uh...
Or damn W.
Maybe an I nine.
Yeah.
Well, for paying hours, it'd be...
Well, hourly, I think, comes with other things. They only work so many hours a year and stuff like that. It was part of each year's due, comparing.
I'm not asking you to change that.
No. By your will.
I'll motion to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Hearing none, motion carries. Transfer fifteen hundred dollars from eleven two hundred hourly to forty-four, four forty-four furniture fixtures over a hundred dollars. Motion carries.
We are taking the chairs, the total, a lot of your, uh, no, I'm sorry.
We will give them approval.
He's approved, but fifteen hundred dollars from Rich, fifteen hundred dollars from planning commission, fifteen hundred from Stormwater, forty-five hundred without additional chairs.
Okay. Wait, what? Wait, how long are those chairs there? Because they don't have work coming out of them?
No, they don't. That's extra.
That's extra. Thank you for being diligent and that's, I mean, that's your turn. How much is that chair? Well, I gotta do the math on that. That's crazy.
Your chair's about three, I think.
About three, recently about three fifty, the chair. And they have a little hydraulic, uh, the, unfortunately, those guys are... And they got the last twenty years, apparently, so.
Three seventy-five. Thanks to it.
Three seventy-five, the chair.
A lot of money.
Did you get over the...
I'll, I'll second Mike's motion.
We have a, uh, motion and a second to approve fifteen hundred. All in favor, or further discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say is that, and I've talked to you about this, is, um, as a council, the hourly, I know it's your own conduct, I get it, but there's certain things that I guess I can't wrap my head around yet in government. Why do we spend these out of hourly? Like, I understand consultants, because, you know...
They're going out of...
There's, it's, it's a payment going out, but when we're talking about permanent raises or when we're talking about, you know, um, furniture or, you know, stuff like that, I just, I don't understand how hourly becomes part of the equation, I guess, you know?
I think they've had their hours, so they could do this.
Well, no, but, I mean, think, think about this. Um, that's the last meeting, we approve the raise. Okay, out of hourly. Fine, I, listen, I want people to make money, I get that. But are we going to a budget time replenish it hourly? Yes, probably. I mean, I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna think about, are you going to down? And I guess what I'm saying, so can he, his department, give a, go on a business point about his hourly apartment rights going forward? It's gonna keep going forward. I just, it, some, some of this stuff just kind of, I just have...
Or, or so does the state, you know, the loan partner.
It, it just, it just bothers me sometimes how we look at hourly and buy furniture, get permanent raises and do things. If that's, you know, statute law, then I'd say we probably can't do that. It just, I think as a council, it, it just, it bothers, bothers me that we do that.
I certainly can take a look at that. Uh, the, the label ramifications of that, I, I think it is permissible, but if you want me to check that I end up buying.
Sometimes, yeah. Good, and I, and like I said, I'm sure you have money to put it, like I said, out of any other account. There's probably lots of money somewhere to take out, but it's just one of the things where I look at hourly, hourly should be used for, you know, consultants, uh, part-time employees to save us money on the benefits. And it just, I think everybody looks at, well, it's my part of money, I get to do, you know, spend it how we want, and I don't, I just, that kind of...
So can we pull up the planning commission budget, see what we, we budgeted for hourly? See what they, I mean, just to get a...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
The only person we spent is, uh, paying Dan Coe, the old minister.
But see, and, and, and I'm just saying, going forward, when we budget money, and I think the council has to be, we have to look into, how much are we giving each department hourly? Because like I was saying before the meeting, listen, if we're gonna name, just, if we're just gonna rename it slush fund, I'd have no problem with that. If I said, okay, we're gonna take out a slush fund money. Fine, you want, you want, you know, you wanna, uh, buy chairs? I have no problem with that. But when we, when we look at hourly, it just, to me, the, it, it, I always thought the intent was to hire part-time used consultants, user, or stuff like that, and not just from the range one one eight two.
Maybe I might respond to a couple of them. Number one, I'm not enhancing anyone's salary.
I know that, Mike, I'm, this is going back, so.
I understand. Second, you know, it was this time last year when I thought budget better went up here a year, three, four months. So I kind of have a process that was done before. Second, I think the hourly is important. In our case, we just made a management decision to hire contractors instead of hiring persons.
Which I agree with.
Because of the task we had at hand, which was just a command decision in January, made after the budget was approved once before. So it was dealt with a hand. I think managerially, we made the best decision possible to do, the way we did it.
No, and I, and I agree with your statements that you said, you know, it's just, I think come budget time, I just want to get that mindset. If we're gonna keep raising hourly, that it's not going for us.
Did you see that, right?
I'm, I did.
Oh, yeah, get back real quick. Out of the three funds, they pulled up, the hourly.
You've got very good eyesight.
That's one money, close to high admission for the budget through thirty thousand. It's like, I don't know, we just spent, uh, there's stormwater, what, just ten dollars, spent a hundred and twenty.
Stormwater, usually stormwater and bridge, we hire, uh, indoor, outdoors interns, summer interns. Planning commission generally not. We use that for special cases.
One one eight oh?
Yeah, one one eight oh.
Careful, right, you gotta find out what it is. That's all I'm learning.
Hey, I, listen, I'm just saying, come budget, we need to really start looking at hourly, we need to start looking at a lot of different things. And there's just things, I've been up here for two years, it get, get...
Well, right, we, normally, we, in the past, the previous auditor, they had pulled up the law system that showed you when we were going through the budget, what was left in that line item. Uh, so maybe when we're going through the budget, we want to ask them to do it. It might be a lot of work. I don't know if they can still do it as quick as they're used to. But it would show, like, if he's moved on the budget, a hundred thousand for next year, and he still has sixty thousand left in the account, seventy thousand, that would be questionable, right? Why do you need that?
Right, right, I agree.
And I don't know how easy that is for you guys. I just want to hear you. Because I think it happened before the law system, Karen, it's always up front of us.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
I think we have a motion and a second.
Now, we're running the second fifteen hundred, the last one.
The second.
On the second round?
Transfer one.
Okay, transfer. So, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the last fifteen hundred additional to the chair and staff.
I have a motion to approve the additional fifteen hundred for the other chairs. Sorry. I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Andy Vasquez.
Uh, yes.
Jeremy Reva.
No.
Greg Spence.
No.
Mike Furtner.
Yes.
Andy Vasquez.
Yes.
Redstone.
Yes.
Michelle Harris.
Yes.
Five two.
Greg, it depends on what kind of quality you're getting. I mean, some of those chairs have two hundred bucks, they break off in a year.
I'm not saying, hey, I don't know if anybody was, send me the chair, then they told the...
I'm sure these chairs are...
I used to buy my chairs at Costco for my, for my office. They used to get them for two hundred, two twenty-five, two thirty.
Can you guys, can I have some on your desk? Or does it have to be just three, six, or something?
Chairs are expensive.
Okay, we're gonna run one here.
Council members, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike, for your...
You know the tents, sir. Director Allison, come on down. Uh, yeah, you can throw those pants on there. I used to have...
Hours, yeah.
I know hours, yeah.
Gary Germain was on mine.
He's on mine as well.
He's not coming anywhere.
I think he would do that.
Hi.
Hello, Ellen, how are you doing?
Hi, I'm just living the dream. What about y'all? We're all living the dream.
I don't know what the dream where is, but I'd actually be there because this, this is what I'm having. We have a request for additional ten thousand to...
That's Gary's.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Gary's.
Yeah.
Okay, you have business for us? Ooh, a reduction, you are my new best friend. A reduction thirteen oh three thirty-seven to eleven hundred salaries. That's the salary to attention manager. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Can I just, I just wanted to give you a heads up on something.
Yes, please.
Just overview, just so you know where I'm coming from. Because this is just one step in, um, another step that's gonna come next month in terms of guys in regards to just the refiguring of my staff. So this is step number one in regards to our attention manager. So there is gonna be the reduction in the salary under the general fund by the thirteen thousand, and then also saving money out of our co-speak. Um, and then next month, I'm gonna be coming back in front of you in regards to, I'm making some changes in regards to, um, some, some management positions, which will increase a little bit, but decrease in other places. But the total savings to the general fund will be about ten thousand dollars still. So I'll work on that.
Thank you. Can I get a, I, can I get a...
I'll get a motion.
You got it. I'll make a second. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Jeremy Reva.
Yes.
Greg Spence.
Yes.
Mike Furtner.
Yes.
Andy Vasquez.
Yes.
Redstone.
Yes.
Michelle Harris.
Yeah.
Andy Bosak. Andy Bozak? Zachary?
Motion carries. Motion, uh, to, form one forty-four, sixty-seven thousand, five thirty-seven to fifteen four, five hundred for retention manager. Reduction in salary for retention manager. This is part of that process we were talking about. Can I hear one here?
I'll make a motion, second.
And then the second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mike Frickner?
Yes.
Andy Vasco?
Yes.
Redstone?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
And Gregson?
Yes.
We have another reduction for five thousand dollars to eleven hundred salaries, one eleven hundred salaries reduction for sal, salary for retention manager. Part of the process, once again.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mike Frickner?
Yes.
Andy Vasco?
Yes.
Redstone?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
Gregson?
Yes.
We have also an additional five thousand to zero for retention manager. I have a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, one second.
A motion in two seconds. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Redstone?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Andy Bozak?
Yes.
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
Gregson?
Yes.
Andy Vasco?
Yes.
And before you leave, I don't, I have to hear anybody about the plans, so let me know what you need.
We put up the chicken wire today-
Okay.
-in the garden, and so the kids put that up, so we are about ready to rock and roll with the garden.
Well, you sent me the list of what you need, and that will, will take pretty soon.
It was really good, so, I'm gonna write that down right now, too.
Okay.
Cause I will forget.
So, I- Thank you.
Thank you.
Parts of recreation, not the program, the annual person, Superintendent Jake McElroy. I make a motion to approve the ten thousand of advertised vacancy events, but-
I have a second.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say a sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Jake, for the conversation.
Wait, is there a ribbon cutting, cutting ceremony coming up in my council?
Yes. So I can, uh, give a little information on the, on state of case, I doubt, but.
I'll be joking around.
So we are due the, uh, ribbon cutting for the new theater on June twenty-eighth. So we had a new, we moved the two. We have a boot truck out there, we're gonna get some entertainment out there, uh, we need some seating out there, something nice to add. With the, before we're working cutting for the end.
Are you working with Sam with her boot truck, the one that's, what's that boot truck called?
Press start.
Press start.
Just a thought. Not missing pride or anything, but there are the three hundred, probably just checking for friend.
Thank you, very excited about it.
Thank you. Okay, you have the department. Come on down here.
Aren't they giving us money? We're not, we don't like.
We're trying to, we're not sure yet. We'll, we'll find out in two to three months. We started, we started off the money, who else he dissed and pissed off? Okay, currently we're telling them to be under six five dollars and thirty-seven cents, to be specific.
I'll vote to table it up, table that.
I'll second that.
Can we get an answer from our attorney?
He kinda gave an answer.
I did, I did. Oh, okay, yeah, I did, I, I thought I said it was every-
So what I, what I heard is, from the political subdivision that it came from, and Carrie, I think shopping, I look at, I'm a team player, I mean, I'll do what I have to do, but I, I thought she looked at where it was trying to, where it originally came from, and-
One of them, the other one I-
The one of them, the other, we, we didn't know.
So the one, the six you didn't know?
That's what I did know.
So that, that's what you were thinking?
Well, it, maybe I should, if, if, Mr. President, if I may, just to comment, uh, the, in, in, in doing the research to determine, you know, whether and where those dormant kinds of funds can go, um, my research landed me just to either the rainy day fund or to the general fund. Unless you could, uh, precisely pinpoint, uh, the ordinance that it came from, and it, and if it was not, I don't wanna go too, too far down the rabbit hole, but essentially, the, the statute says it's either to go to, for a dormant fund, the general fund, or to the rainy day fund. And all of the commentary from the SBOA says exactly the same thing. It, it goes to the, the general fund, as much as, I, I mean, I certainly, I, I, I don't have any opinion one way or the other, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think the Health Department is a wonderful one, I, you know, if it goes to them, that's great, but legally, uh, I, my interpretation is it goes to the general fund.
And that's fine, we just were keeping it on the, it was tabled, and so-
I'd like to withdraw my table motion. I would like to read the motion to move that hundred twenty-six three fifty-seven thirty-seven, or fifty-seven thirty-seven to the general fund.
I will draw my second, I, I will second your motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, and I have another question. Do you know how far this dormant fund is back, you know, more appropriate time?
So it is my understanding that this went back to when the county operated the hospital.
Oh.
And that's why it's dormant, because in order to have medical response, or so there are volunteers, um, from the public. So it's a nationwide, it's a FEMA act for money, um, that puts locally volunteer individuals who respond, and then it's a Republican emergency, and so we have the fund, but when the hospital was open, my understanding, because I actually come across today, we're, we're trying to revitalize the core again, but you have to carry medical liability insurance on all volunteers. So it's my understanding that when the hospital was open, and that was something the hospital was accountable to.
Correct, being not the first, I think that's the move back to-
Exactly, so, I think that's what happened.
Seems like we go back to the general fund then. That's enough? I have a motion?
Yes.
A second, we have a motion and a second to put in the general fund?
Yes.
Roll call please.
So we said it has to, to go to one of those two funds, if that's your dormant funds have it.
The, the SBOA's guidance was, on it, in, in every instance, uh, it would go to either the rainy day fund or to the general fund. Uh, you, when you read the statute that they base that on, uh, this particular fund, uh, may, you, you could make the argument that it, it wouldn't necessarily have to go to the general fund, but I think when you read, in total, the statute plus SBOA guidance, I think that's the clearest answer, uh, to that question, whether to the rainy day fund or to the general fund.
I'm just thinking, because what she said, uh, this money since we used to own the hospital, that this might be, this money is stock going for the annual contract coming up, you know, kind of tied to it, so.
What were you doing with that money in the general?
Yeah, as long as we remember, that's what I was saying, I mean, we went to where we paid it out, it was just a thought, but maybe we should just keep it in mind.
Another thought is, who weighs measures is gonna come in front of us for a new van for sixty thousand dollars? Um, for a different trade, you know, what, I, I, listen, I'm fine with it, I, I, I have no problem with the healthcare, but we have some other things coming up, and, you know, maybe we help weigh some measures out, cause that's not in their budget, it's like a twenty-year-old, it's a specialized van where he has to go around and check all the, um, gas pumps. It's, it's, it's needed, and he's gonna be coming up in front of, but he's scared, I mean, I guess, I don't think a guy asks for anything special in here, so. Um, I know we're gonna need that, just to put on everybody's radar.
So that would go to a particular fund, then?
No, no, we're both in general.
We can pay that trailer up there.
Like I said, if she didn't go out there.
Ambulance.
Exactly, first option, just to, to let people-
Not three hundred and seventy-five, that chair is gonna-
Not for chairs, no problem. So we have a motion and a second for, to go to the general fund. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
Gregson?
Yes.
Mike Frickner?
Yes.
Andy Vasco?
Yes.
Redstone?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Thank you, Gary.
We have a motion here?
Thank you for all that.
We have an additional fifty-one eight eighty-eight fifty-three to six one hundred, is your fund transfer. Same thing, Norman Fund for state board of town.
Make a motion to put it in the general fund?
I'll second.
Motion in the second, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Gregson?
Yes.
Mike Frickner?
Yes.
Andy Vasco?
Yes.
Redstone?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Jeremy Reavis?
Yes.
Two door on the same car.
No more cases. We have the clarification.
Yes, so this is, a few months ago, we came, um, to report the council, and we have a joint part-time position that we share with this tobacco corporation. Um, she goes into schools, and she has baby prevention, things like that. Uh, so that grant does end June thirtieth, and at that time, we moved that position into an hourly position in the Health First Indiana Fund. But she does lots of risk reduction education for us, she works commercially on. So the one forty-four and the jobs portion are just for an education program for, I think it's what it's called, they just wanted to clarify that it's not just tobacco. So, just that she does other things in conjunction with, um, ourselves, um, the HUG Coalition, the task force behalf of the U.S. Department. So it's just clarification, I don't know if you guys need to do any kind of moving, just for, um, advocates and most of us, I just wanted to clarify that, um, it's not just tobacco education that she does, she does, there should be some fool.
What does it grant, what does it grant?
It grant in June thirtieth. She works for us, it, our part of her job is like fourteen hours a week.
And she's already been moved over to, uh?
It will take effect July first, we, they're even approved.
Okay. We're just clarifying.
I know the things-
So you just want thumbs up from all of us? On Facebook, it's a clarification. Yeah, thank you for that. Thank you, thank you. We're all clear now.
Okay.
Okay, we're last clearing some of the other things we had to deal with today. Very, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Nine one one, Director, Debbie Dunn, order, second to command, for work flexible. Additional two forty-seven five hundred for maintenance agreements, proportionate to outsourced quote from Motorola for CAD administration, or, uh, for CAD provisioning needs.
I'd like to vote that, but motion is denied.
We have a motion to deny, second, we have a second, well, any discussion, discussion?
My motion was gonna be, I'd like to table it, cause I would like to hear from Debbie, um, no offense, but, um, she started the conversation, so I know she's on vacation, so it'd be kind of unfortunate for us to get in this conversation right now.
But I don't think anybody's approving this.
No, we're not, we're not going to.
So I, my motion would stand, I would still say we just not got, have her come back, if she wants, I even do something else, that's another conversation. True, that's two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars.
It's not absolutely ludicrous. No, it's not gonna act, no, you're right, it's not gonna act, I'm just saying, if you wanted to hear from Debbie, to talk about the stipends, no, I, I, listen, first second con, you know,
Can I get a second?
We have a second.
Oh, we have a second, we have a second.
This was for what you asked her to look into. So I asked her to get a quote from Motorola for how much it costs to catch up the cars. Instead, we got a quote, which I thought would be ten, twenty grand, we got a quote for two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, for ongoing contract, and then we played, for how many? As opposed to the stipend that you guys denied last meeting, which was like thirteen thousand dollars, I think, for two people, and then one person would drop off. This is for a full-time person from Motorola, who's-
Counteract our person.
The other issue is that, that, that stipend doesn't fix the problem, so I, I was like really ready to speak on this tonight.
Well, go ahead.
So, the issue is not just with the CAD program, the issue is also with the transfer of records. And the persons from Motorola, they've already proven that they're struggling to transfer the records over with the system not being purchased. If this person is not able to go into red code to transfer the records appropriately, then this amount of money doesn't make any sense. So that's my question to you, if this is a person that's just doing CAD, are they fixing a whole system?
This would not be someone to address the records issues, and just program new, this would be a Motorola employee on site for the next year, um,
That doesn't represent our vision.
CAD provision, it doesn't address the records.
Which is a huge problem.
Yes.
I'm sure, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir. But so, I used to work in an industry that did two-way radio, and microwave trunkey systems for power utility companies, like this is what I did. So to have, in order, to have a system that was installed in quarter four twenty-twenty, that is still not operating fully functional, five years later, is so beyond my scope of understanding. I mean, we're doing major projects for, you know, electric companies, for states, and they went up a year. So to have an organization like Motorola, and I know, I know I'm preaching to the choir, I know you guys are in meetings, and it's been a big mess, but to have an organization that has not been able to trans, appropriately transfer our records, or appropriately write code for any of the mistakes that are happening in the transfer, because that's what they should be doing, and that should have been taken, I mean, that's like a six-month process. So I'm not really sure why we would pay more money to Motorola when they miss fact not done what they should have done in the initial transfer of, of system.
I agree. Should basically broken- Uh, we would much rather, uh, do this kind of CAD provisioning in-house.
Right, but I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't fix the errors in the system.
The records issue, no, but.
Right, so we, we need a fully functional-
There are multiple issues to be addressed, what we, the dispatch, have to address is CAD provisioning. This is what gives us the CAD recommendations, to make sure that the appropriate resources are being sent to emergency.
Right.
That's the issue that we're trying to address here, I can't really speak to the records. RMS records, that's not really nine one one area, I can't really acknowledge, acknowledge the on land.
I mean, especially for dispatch, I mean, especially for dispatchers and people going on scene, right?
Well, like, like I said, dispatch doesn't deal in the records environment much to you with CAD dispatching, and then once it gets dispatched to an officer, and the officer goes on scene and writes report, that's where records management takes over, so I have very little experience with record management. We do a little bit in terms of looking up history of individual locations, but it's very cursory knowledge of records management.
So my bigger question, I guess, is there someone currently in the department that has enough time on their hands to do what this, what needs to be done, and is it truly going to take a year?
We're talking about CAD provisioning?
Yes.
We have one person in-house who has been doing CAD provisioning, um, he's very knowledgeable, um, but he's a shift supervisor, he's not really in his, just job duties as a shift supervisor, so, um, he's been doing a great job, like I said, we would much prefer to address the, have a in-house person.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking, is this person, does this person have enough time during said shifts, every day, to address these issues, and will it take a year?
So, I don't know how long it'll take, hopefully less than a year, um, our idea is to get him the appropriate, um, address this, and either, appropriately compensate him for the duties he's doing, as well as train another person, have him transform another person in our department to do, that's how we-
For the CAD?
Yeah, so, I wanna make sure you do, last month, they came in front of us, they asked for two stipends, one stipend for two different employees, and now they're talking about one employee, but I think Debbie still wants two, and pull, yes, one, one person to match up, and then one person to maintain and continue to do the CAD. For, for the initial, we would like two, because of all the things to be corrected and fixed. After, the, until the end of the year, uh, we can revisit and see if we still need the two. I think we'll still need the one just to maintain the system.
So you permanently need a CAD person for the, for this system to work appropriately going forward, this is a permanent person.
Yes.
And it would be a full-time position that, in, in technically speaking, for, for them to do the technical work and continue updating whatever needs to be done with CAD, this is a full-time position going forward for the foreseeable future.
I think the ultimate goal-
Not the fixing, just the main thing.
I think the ultimate goal is to have a full-time position, strictly just like a CAD administrator.
Right.
I think what we'd like to do down the road, right now, um, he is able to do it, uh, on shift as much as he can, um,
And listen, I feel for you guys, because I can't imagine the frustration level that you guys are feeling with a system that's five years old and still not functioning appropriately. And obviously, it's a huge issue for our county, because it's the safety of the county when it is not working appropriately. And then when officers are going and they can't pull the records, when they're going on stage, that is also a safety issue, I mean, there's just so many layers of issues with this system, so I, I want, you know, like, I deal for you, because that is, that is serious frustration. I know how frustrated I do when my grading system isn't working, one day at school, and I'm trying to get stuff done. So like you guys are dealing with this every day, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding that realistically speaking, you really need someone full-time CAD for the foreseeable future to deal with the maintenance and the continual, continual problems of this system.
Yes, that's not what she just told me, Debbie had told me, she doesn't need someone working at it full-time, but that's not their own duty, and she would still, still be a shift supervisor, he would still be doing all this.
But it sounds like-
Yes, but I'm just telling you, Debbie had given me different information than he just-
Well, that's why I'm clarifying.
But I wonder if the stipend, if the guy who's there doing it is, what, eight hours, ten hours, what is the shift time?
Twelve hours.
Twelve hours, so during that twelve hours, he's doing training plus CAD, while we, aside from what he's doing, he's working for twelve hours. What does it matter if I'm working a little bit with this subject or that subject in the same time frame, that's where I'm confused.
Because the additional duties of a CAD administrator, they're very technical, they're not in the job duties or shifts.
But it's not taking up this other time, I mean, he's still working the same amount of twelve hours.
He's working, he's working overtime as well to address our.
Well, he didn't actually not say, so now the stipend.
Well, there are mandatory overtime, I believe. She did say that, that there are mandatory overtime. He did say mandatory.
Well, and I think also theoretically thinking it sounds like, and I'm just saying what I'm hearing, is that at some point, the idea, the ideal, not saying to heaven, I understand the ideal would be that you have someone full-time with CAD administrator experience, right? With CAD experience, which would be a higher pay scale coming in because it is a different technical problem. Is that what?
I don't remember that part.
No, we're, I mean, we're, all we're gonna do is give the stipend and I said, how about we just do it through the end of the year? Let's call it a day and we can reassess it.
Right.
Well, at the end of the year, keep paying them and then come budget time, if Debbie wants to say, hey, I need a, a full-time position at this much money, put it in her budget, we can fight about it, we can talk about it.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking. Because.
Another is what she's asking. She never said that immediately.
No, right, now she's asking for this to Motorola contract for somebody to actually do this.
So that's why I was asking, because this looks like a more permanent situation than a stipend. That's why I was asking the question. Because this is not a stipend, right? This is a much longer situation than a stipend.
I, this was, my understanding was pondering because Andy made the comment, well, how much would it cost if somebody from Motorola did this, she came back, this was her price? But I was told that it would just be two people with stipends for the rest of the year and then there hope would be the, it would be one person next year. I, I never had the conversation about a full-time person dedicated, but.
No, that was I, you just stated is what I, not a full-time dedicated.
But I think that's the term that was, if you, there's going to be a full-time person that would come up in budget.
So why, why are the stipends not on my agenda? Why was it just the, the two hundred and fifty thousand from Motorola?
I can't speak to that.
Because I believe we denied the stipends.
So we, we denied the stipend. What, what had happened is.
There was a vote on the stipend again.
Right, and it got denied. What had happened, she wasn't clear on the stipend, it's become more clear, she's not here, so I believe the motion was to table this.
No, no, no.
We were not willing to deny.
Yes, of course.
We do not want this two forty-seven.
No, without. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, roll ball please.
Greg Stone.
No.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes. I just looked at your face, I'm sorry.
You have a vote on my voting against it, you not want this?
I'd like that to deny it.
Correct, yes, just to deny it.
Mike Purser.
Yes.
Andy Dantos.
Yes.
Red Stowe.
Yes.
Michelle Harris.
Yes.
Andy Boga.
Yes.
Jeremy Reva.
Yes.
So she needs to come back.
Yeah, my main suggestion is for her to come back with something like, she had talked to several of us about to have the stipend for one individual to carry on for the year and basically two people, right? And she's gonna drop one off. And then in her budget for next year, the figure of this under process, I'm gonna do this job, okay? That, that'll be a first one, so.
So just to let her know what I need to do or probably I direct her down. Is, is it possible to reintroduce the stipend issue to have it to be voted on again or is that?
Yes.
Yes, we can do that.
Yes, yeah.
All right, I will make sure to record that one last time. Thank you.
Okay, you're done.
Am I not done?
No, that was misinformation of all.
Oh, that was misinformation?
Okay. Oh, you're good.
They're good. There you go. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Second reading.
The final way to justice is to be paid, and I put this place in a five-month year. In the general philosophy, reduction in salaries of thirteen thousand thirty-seven dollars, food, bread, furniture, fixtures over a hundred bucks, fifteen hundred bucks. Ban from mission consultant, thirty-five grand, stormwater furniture fixtures over a hundred, fifteen hundred. JUC code, reduction in salaries, five thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four GO bond, fractional five million nine hundred and forty thousand, consultants, fifty five hundred and twenty-two thousand. Medical response for inter-fund transfer, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy. Health performance fund, inter-fund transfer, five thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Second reading.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve? Second. A motion and a second, roll ball please. I'm sorry, discussion, no discussion, roll ball please.
Greg Stone.
Yes.
Mike Purser.
Yes.
Andy Dantos.
Yes.
Red Stowe.
Yes.
Michelle Harris.
Yes.
Andy Boga.
Yes.
Jeremy Reva.
No.
Eric. Do you need to sign? Do you need to sign?
Six one?
No.
Motion carried, okay. Attorney report, Eric.
Nothing other than what we've already talked about and the only thing I wanted to just point out was the, I, I don't know if everyone saw the email today from the Director of Communications for the RDA about the appointment that County Council last minute to the North.
That's pretty cool.
And Professional Sports Development Commission. They, they're having their first meeting on August sixth. So we would need to vote.
By July the latest.
Yeah, and so I, I just wanted to hit that on everyone's radar in terms of, you know, when we might want to have that.
Now, what exactly is this commission putting their assumption?
I, I don't, I'm not that familiar with it, other than you're.
You know that?
They're, they're considering, I, I didn't think they're trying to.
Tell you this is something cool.
Lure Professional Sports Development.
So is that very interesting?
Professionals, no, I was saying Reva's or me or even Brett. I mean, Reva's, that is Reva's baby, bringing sports and stuff to the community.
You got a baby?
Home's not a baby.
Yeah, he's twelve foot tall.
Well, we gotta make an appointment at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta make an appointment.
The county, every county council with, I think it's Lake, Porter, and I think it's Leport as well, has to by the recent statute, appoint one member from the council to that commission.
Yeah, I, I, we would like to, especially if Russell, Lake County gets everything to stay.
I'll make a motion, that's fine. There's no problem with that.
And we can, we can do that tonight, or I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone.
We have, we have a motion and a second. To have Jeremy be the representative of the council.
Hold on.
This, North West Indiana, the sports program, we're trying to get the council to take it. Um, so, um, all the favors, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye?
No.
So, you're in, good sir. Okay, and, uh, information, sir?
Nothing else.
Okay. There you go.
So is someone gonna respond or am I letting him know?
Yeah, we'll have Joy call Wellman and let him know.
Okay, and I'll set up a forum.
Yep.
I'll set up a forum where Andy can find it and he'll be up.
Okay. And then when they come before the council, would you like to bring anything up, please?
Mr. President, I have something I'd like to talk about for discussion.
Okay, sir, go ahead.
Uh, you know, department is bringing out additional personnel or, or any type of raises, I think at this time. Any, the council, the depart, any department bringing forth any additional personnel or raises, I would like to make a motion that we put like a hiring freeze in, no raises until the budget type to a man and he finds out where the budget's gonna be, you know, get, get a grip on something.
Can I, if somebody leaves, can they be replaced?
If, I, I have no problem with that. I just think new additional, additional people. And I guess it bothers, I've always said this, it bothers me on the budget that people come for raises. And if, if you want to fight for your people, fight during budget time, let's talk about it. And I understand there's grants or different, so there's things that, you know, come, come up in front of us, I have no problem with that, but, um, right now where we're at, I just think we, you know, with the hiring freeze and I don't think anybody should come up in front of us for raises.
Uh, council, may, may I clarify that, that does not include, let's say, should Director try to come back with a stipend request?
The stipend's already in her budget.
Okay.
As far as.
Just clear.
As far as that, that's request, I believe she has eight spots, oh, I think it's eight, she's using six, um, so I would have no, no problem with that on the side. So we could be new personnel, handle, handle raises.
So if they can tie raises, wait until we get raises, then we'll.
I'm looking for, I'm just, I just don't want a department head coming up for additional people, annual raises, until we get the budget. When we get the budget, we talk about it and then, I mean, from, from January, February, March, our meetings should be easy. Nobody really should be looking for more people or more, or more raises. I mean, guys, that's our job. We put in the work to set these budgets, we should, we should abide by it. Now, when there's grant opportunities, for example, like Sheriff Felling gets a grant to pay for half a cop, I have no problem with that because, you know, we're getting half paid for, that's great, we can add a person. But, you know, we, I just think the, the times with SD one, what we're facing right now, I, I just, I don't want to see requests come up in front of us, to be quite frankly, I really don't. And we can handle this out during the budget.
But if you make that and then you allow someone, our department to do that, where they're moving their money around and giving raises.
That's why, that's why we have the president.
Motion to do it.
Because we have the president put out to the department heads, we're not entertaining raises or any additional personnel.
Yeah, but then on our next meeting, we are.
That's what I'm saying, so I would. Well, they, I don't know, they shouldn't be coming up in front of us, so if you put out a memo that says we are not entertaining new hires, not entertaining, um, any, any raises.
They don't have to.
You don't put it on the agenda.
It's all controlled by.
Right, it's controlled by, it's controlled by Andy. You should not even come up to us to entertain right now. So.
I agree with that. Go ahead, Jerry.
Jerry, I hate that look. So I think. No, I mean, a good look, I have a good question.
I can't get rid of it. For the hiring, you, now I got a problem with these outside public safety, is that?
Again, if they need, and, you know, a couple cops leave, I have no problem replacing cops, you know, in the police office.
Dispatch.
Dispatch, E dot one-one, that's, absolutely.
And if you do it that way, where you're now, you're leaving out.
Well, I have no problem with that, so I can vote for that. Because you're not doing it for public safety. Well, we wouldn't be really doing it for anybody, I'm just talking about anybody, new hires, new positions, except for.
You're saying placements are acceptable, placements are acceptable, or if there's grant money that comes in the middle of the year, you know, look at it.
Yeah, go ahead, I mean, the motion, let's talk about it.
Turn it on.
And so who do you want to hire, sir?
Give me more chairs.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
I'm losing a person this year, so could you replace that person, I couldn't address that. But in the budget last year, I do have a budget for two positions I have, I feel that was approved last year. So could there be a clarification if I don't have it in the budget?
My main intention with this, honestly, Mike, was, I know you had two positions, but you know what sticks out in my mind? God, I hate doing this, but when airport was in front of us, and I'll never forget this, it's like, well, hey, how many positions do you have?
Uh, six.
How many have filled it?
Two.
How long have you tried filling them for?
Um, I think two thousand seven.
I swear to God, I'm like, wait a minute, why, we're, we're putting positions and we're not filling them? And it just, to me, this is just not how my brain works. I mean, if you need somebody, you know, we get people. Personally, I think the people you have, I think you can honestly work with them to the end of the year to your budget.
And, but I already have, you, you approved those positions.
You're, you're, you're right, I, I get that, but I think there's a time that, you know, it's, it's just one of these things where it's like, what, what this council has coming up in front of us? I understand every department that wants to hire somebody and you had in your budget, I.
And I think it was your earlier thing when you were talking about taking money from our, you know, just to buy something else.
Right.
You know, if you have that money there.
So are you asking if you wanted to fill these two positions at this time? Is that what you're asking?
By the way, I heard the motion winding up is hiring new positions.
New positions unless you have them already staffed right now. That's, that's just pretty, that's simple, I mean.
Are, so are his two, okay, so would his two positions?
They're not staffed now, he couldn't hire, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
So they're not staffed now, so?
They're not staffed now.
Were they staffed last year?
No, I.
They, they're not staffed, period.
Got it.
If you, if council or members, I did something budget times. We had chief engineer, Mike Navatney and all that, I decided we're gonna do this.
Rework the whole office.
Reorganize. Part of that was two assistants on for the highway engineer, one for stormwater engineer. Now, we've been trying to hire, but by the time the budget was, you gotta make motion, you gotta hire these people, especially grants, you gotta make offers in December and January. We've been unsuccessful, we're not gonna find them now, probably find them later in the year, but the way you're wording your motion is, I can't fill those positions. If I have to come before you.
Because the reason why I don't want to fill the positions, quite frankly, is because if God forbid we have to cut, we have to have money to cut. I'm just being honest with you. So if, if, if we need, if we need money to cut.
You don't want to hire them and then have to.
Why are you gonna hire them and then say, okay, well, hey, guys, fine, ten or fifty percent? I mean, it, it, and I'm not saying they're not needed, Mike, everybody's needed, right? Everybody, everybody's department comes in front of us and says, I need, I need, I need. But I think this year, and I hope I'm wrong, I think we're gonna have to say, do we really need it? Like, do we really need an assistant? Can we get by? That's where we're at, guys. I mean, that is, that is where we're at this year.
I'm just, I'm just, it's just a comment. I hear what Brett's saying, I think that it's already budgeted. You know, I would kind of segue off of what you're saying, you know, that we encourage or somehow let departments know we're gonna ask to underspend by ten percent. Underspend your budget by ten percent and he can cut wherever he wants. Hypothetic, if we were to do something like that.
So what you're saying may not be salary.
You could still hire his people part-time or wherever he has, it's in the budget, but if we were to say, you know, when you gotta underspend by ten percent because of the challenges we have, then he can go back, I don't know where he's gonna find it, but that's up to each department head to do then. I mean, that's just, I'm just kind of throwing it out.
I don't, I urge you to question.
I just was saying, you're saying that it may not necessarily be salary. If you go back to him and you decide to. Storm handwriting everything and printing everything and they can cut by ten percent, that's fine.
Personnel is the thing, is usually where people find it, but, you know, if they can find whatever the percentage is, if you were to even do that. But I think it's kind of on point to kind of say, well, what you're saying with the challenges we're gonna be faced with, and then he can decide if it would happen where he would find that ten percent.
And I guess where I'm going with this is a lot of times when I see, it just things irk me where, you know, we need, we need, we need, and then a position goes and then they split the position's money up against every, you know, for everybody else. It's like, just stuff like that, it's like, if you need the people, I have no problem, let's get the people, but somebody leaves and then they say, well, we're gonna reorganize, we're gonna take that position and, and divide the money of, of, you know, like, ten people out of there. It just, it just doesn't feel right to me. We should be doing a lot of this stuff during budget and if, if you need the people, then we hire the people strategically and I have no problem with that. But to, to kind of play these games, I just, I don't like the games, really, I'll just be honest, I don't like the games.
Shouldn't it matter where the budget, where the money comes from too? Like, if it's in his budget, it's not part of the general fund, should that not matter? I mean, because now he, it's not hurting our general fund or anyone else. Jimmy?
And I know you always get mad at me for saying this, Greg, but I will tell you, any, whether. How do you like it that way? I don't know, but whether it's a fee, whether it's, whether it's a stormwater fee, whether it's a tax, it's a tax, it's the people pay. So, um, the general fund versus non-general fund, really never care, I never, I don't care about that. I care about all the tax dollars, spending them wisely, as wisely, as wisely as we can. That's just how my brain works. And I don't, there's a great state between, you know, well, you raise your own fees, well, the people are paying the fees, so.
I agree with what you're saying a hundred percent, but, you know, in response to your comment, you know, gave a comment here, I, I took your advice last year, I came in a positive time to get these positions filled, so. I feel we went through the process here, asking us to do, and they are, but it is there, they are open spots, we just can't hire, you know, hiring engineers right now.
So I have a question for you, sir. Let's say this motion has worked to the point where individual case where it's budgeted and people, the people aren't there, somebody budgeted. What are the likelihood that you would fill those positions before the end of the year?
I think greater than fifty, fifty, probably more by seventy-five percent.
Why do you think you have not hired them up to this point?
Because we have to find that individual. To get the right individual, you gotta find the person that's working somewhere who's happy, but they could be happier somewhere else, that might cross the line.
Oh, really? No, no.
You're right, that's, that's, I bet everybody people, let's talk.
You're not gonna get college grad that are coming out to do the expertise we want to do. We do have one person we are actively interviewing this month. That's for the one position Chelsea's on maternity leave right now, so that one's on hold. on the turn and he's right now, so that one's on hold. So, you know, he did the best we can, we're not just hiring just a warm body, we're hiring someone specific, tell them it's a man or a woman that's got maybe five, seven years experience, that they can firm enough and set up that way purposely.
So with that information, counsel and stone, would you like to proceed with your motion or keep it informed as a then, or?
Well, I just think we get caught in this, you know, and I agree with Mike 100%, you know, well, if it's in their budget, you know, but then we have people that have it in their budget and, you know, they come up in front of us, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, I think you've been doing a great job if you don't hire the next two people till next budget session, you know, it is what it is for me, I would vote no, you know how I feel about all of this, so, it's just not a surprise to you. I just, I think there's things that we have to kind of, you know, put our foot down and say, this is not the time to be hiring more people, because we technically would be hiring more people, you know, so that's where I stand, not very much otherwise.
So we have a motion not to hire any new additional people or raises.
Correct, sir.
Correct. I have a motion, tell me a second.
Well, I'll. If you want to amend it, think it's better, hey, I'm not gonna be amended on, that's why I brought it up.
I know, I know, rules and rules, and like, second of first discussion, just have discussions, I mean, I know what you're doing, appreciate what you're doing. The great Popra, Bob Popra used to say, yeah, I don't, I don't know why we didn't schedule a meeting till June, you know, after we set the budget, you know, for that reason, what you said earlier, we set the budget decision within the budgets, but, and I know we're trying to do that, I think SB one, you know, I can't wait to have Baker somebody up in front of us and have that discussion, but compliments ends, you know, we have to point out, I think SB one's gonna have to be on the property tax fund, the general fund, you know, I don't, all his funds are, you know, it's the bridge fund, but it's a rate fund, that is a rate, so that has kind of indirect effect, you know, fund, but the transmission and the stormwater, those are fees, so, you know, they're not gonna be impacted by SB one, but I'm just trying to think, and appreciate where you're going with it, so let's slow things down here until we get a better understanding of what we're about ready to, you know, walk into this way 2026. Is there, is there a way to maybe slow ourselves into this and see, like, just maybe the correct point of the motion is just any, any new hires in the general fund outside of public safety, we can leave the fee-based funds, and we can rank this up next meeting, I mean, now.
No, listen, I, I, I want to get the conversation started, I appreciate any input, any input, I truly do, and I would have no problem with that, but just, and I, again, where I come from, whether it's fee-based fund or not, makes no difference in my head. Coming, you know, I haven't been in government that long where I'm like, wow, fee-based versus non-fee-based, it's all a fund, right? I mean, if they double stormwater fee, that's.
Yeah, I'm just trying to take.
No money that's coming out of my.
Rank it up to, you know, maybe we start with non-public safety in the general fund, which is gonna be the fund that is most impacted by SB one, and we just start, give the message out, don't fill the missing in the general fund, you know, outside of public safety until further notice, fee-based funds, you know, you're gonna be looked at in the near future, here, so start getting your dust, you know, maybe then addressing, I mean, there's two down the road, I'm just, I appreciate where you're going with it, I support it, just trying to figure out.
And, you know, just from a legal perspective, my only concern, I think we need to, if we're gonna vote, as you had suggested, we may want to think that, I would be a little more comfortable having the time to kind of think that through in terms of the implications of that, we don't want to back ourselves into a corner, and it may be, you know, something as simple as, you know, just a resolution to all department heads that we are not going to look favorably upon, you know, a request like that.
Something a little official.
Yeah, yeah, I just, and I totally, I mean, I mean, my opinion on that political question doesn't matter because I'm not elected, but I do agree with what you're saying, absolutely. It's just, I worry a little bit about making a blanket, having a blanket vote on something like that without having some more time to kind of think through, you know, is it appropriated, is it budgeted, are we gonna get into a fight with a department head over something that's already been, you know, budgeted, you know, previously?
And again, and I appreciate that sentiment, but I look at it as, and listen, I'm not rehashing this, so pretty please don't get on me about this, but if we weren't going to appropriate $6 million to build a building while we have a bond, then I think I could tell the department, hey, look, we're not, we're not doing any more hires, which I have no problem with that, that's your right, good for you, I have no problem with that, but if we had that right to do that, then we definitely have that right to say, no more hires, no more raises. I don't care if it's in your budget or out of your budget.
I, no, I.
I mean, we either do have the authority to do it or we don't.
We would do that by a vote, not a, a.
And if you guys want to do a strongly worded resolution, I have no problem with that. If Mr. Vasquez wants to, you know, tell the department, hey, I'm not gonna entertain that.
You're not gonna put it on the agenda.
It's not, I'm not putting it on the agenda, you have that right, and I would exercise that right if I was president, if I was you. I'm sorry, you're not getting put on the agenda.
And that may be the way to get exactly what you're driving at, without running into any, prematurely running into any legal issues, but I, I think that's.
Maybe a resolution that, hey, you know what, we want to see any, you know.
It's not gonna get put on the agenda.
Not gonna get put on the agenda, bottom line.
Or Jeremy's suggestion as well. I mean, I don't want to take a, I'm not gonna die.
Get a stamp down.
Yeah, on that one, because it's, but I just wanted to make sure that we don't, without thinking through exactly how we want to phrase that word, that what we're going to be voting on, particularly when we're talking about monies that may have already been budgeted. I mean, and I'm not saying.
And I think we're gonna put a lot of work towards this year's budget session, you know, Thursday meetings, meeting with the department heads, and I think we did a lot with last year's budget, some of the things with juvenile detention that I learned, we got it done for them. I mean, so I think as a council, we did, we did a lot of good things with those budgets, you know, listening to the department heads.
So Brett, I just want to mention something, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, because this is kind of what I thought. So if we're asking the departments to stick to their budget, then I feel like we need to keep our word on this year's budget. That's my only, like, internal counsel down there. Is that, is that if we're asking them to adhere to a budget, then I feel that we as the council have to adhere to the budget we approve, was approved, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Like, because then it's like, okay, we're adhering to what we said was given, and you're adhering to what you said you needed, and we are both accountable for what was that.
But she was, with.
No, I'm just saying like the devil's advocate.
I get that, but the thing about it is, is there's some things that need attention, some things don't. Things change so much, and things change so much in government, you know, you might get a grant the next month that says, hey, you hire two people, I have no problem doing that, you know, it's gonna be paid three quarters percent. It's just, I just think we have to have a resolution where, you know, during budget, I want this to get fought out during budget, and I think if we do our job as a council, the department heads do their job, I, you know, January, February, March should be easy, should be easy money station.
Well, then something else that needs to be mentioned along this is overtime. If somebody is lacking an individual, they might use overtime to get some extra work done, which again is decreasing our budget, so maybe along with people, it's no overtime. I'm just.
But again, that can be a cost factor, because like with Debbie Gunn, she is paying overtime and didn't hire like two or three people, so we, and we said, yeah, we'd rather have to do that than, than hire two or three additional people, because you have the benefits, you have the, you know, health insurance costs, so paying the extra overtime on some things is actually, you know, maybe.
I mean, we heard that in this process, again, I appreciate where you're going, I agree, and if there's a resolution that the council passes that says, you know, in light of SB one. We're gonna, we're gonna really look at any request to get on the agenda, you know, and if that's gonna come to.
What if I did a motion, then I'd say, I'd have Harold write something up.
Well, we do, it's our first time, okay, and you know what the resolution said? Like, exactly, let's say, Mike, specific case here, we built the no hires, no raises, however, he can come before the council, he hires somebody because it's in his budget, and we definitely just need to get your name. I mean, let's face it, that's our priority, isn't it?
There's nothing to stop them from hiring, he can hire anybody.
He can hire anybody.
He doesn't have to come in front of us, that's what I'm saying, it's already budgeted. So he could hire her right now, even if we put out a resolution, we would have to change the budget, am I correct?
Well, that's, that's a concern I have, is I, I.
So why don't you just be that admitted, and you control the agenda, it's not putting or don't put people on that, that's your life.
I mean, I was believing you wanted.
You weren't, that's, I, I agree with what you're saying, but if all these doctors are, we don't do the motion.
No, I agree.
And you just sent out an email.
Even to the people, to the department, saying, we're not gonna get your names.
Right now?
I have no problem with that, I would be happy to camp for that.
If we, if we say that nobody can hire in their county right now, but this will body it, whatever passes the vote resolution, however, and then people want to hire, I mean, yeah, it's gonna be because it's in the budget, but I think that would be flying in our face, and we could just, we could do a reduction next meeting and get rid of positions.
Right.
We have that authority.
That would be really hard to do though, with someone that just can't hire.
Well, if we put the message out, don't hire, and they go around with hire, they're, I mean.
Yeah.
We have that authority, yes.
Mike, how would you get along at this point? I'm just asking that, I mean.
It's a strain on some of the managers on there here.
Is it possible to use that money for the employees that you get to hire as overtime money?
The people that are being burned, whether people that don't get overtime.
Uh, okay. I think it's all in there, I'm thinking.
Well, thank you.
You know, so, thank you.
All the time.
Who's the vice president?
Brett. Hey, I've had plenty of conversations with people that called me and I said that I don't think it's a good idea for you to bring that up, absolutely not, so, I have no problem doing that when people call me, and Mike, I've had this discussion with you, you know how I feel about this.
I have a brother.
I told you face to face. Right, exactly, and you brought it upon me, so.
And I agree with Brett, and no new hires or no raises, the only concern I have is that he, if he's running, you don't want to burn your people out, that's all there is to it, okay? That's how we lose people, okay? So.
If I might, I'm clarity one, again, I've only done this one year, but when I feel formal, is I positioned with a annual salary? You proved that, but that's when I came with your degree of position, so those positions, so in general, on one hand, I feel as a manager of the department, you gave me the budget, I could operate within these parameters and say specifically, this person at this salary, but if I want to change that, I think that's really where a lot of your effectiveness, and I don't have to change those. So I'm not asking, so if it comes to, I say, oh, I'm going to do additional people or raises outside of your budget?
Yes, that's fine, move forward.
Yeah.
Moving forward, I have no problem with that.
Good.
Any questions, any discussion?
No, it's a good discussion, I agree, it's a start and a finish, we have to let everybody know, we're not sure what's coming down with, you know, SB one, and these are the discussions we're even at now, so.
So then the resolution will be that, that there will be no additional hires or raises?
Let me ask this, why do we need to do that? Why do we need a resolution to this?
Like Andy could just say now.
Yes, we don't need a resolution.
And Andy just.
But Andy could send an email, we're just not, we're putting a word out to the department.
Okay, so when we put out, well, not first, but I guess after the department, anyway, sometime tomorrow, we'll put it out to the department heads, unless you have it in your budget, no new people, no raises.
And I just don't, hopefully not get in the rush of, hey, we better hire these people, make sure, spend all our budget, budget.
Well, if they, if that's what they do, then they're gonna be responsible if they have to cut.
No, I know, I think that's, I agree, but.
Thank you.
We still have a full.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, fully comment.
Was there, was there, I'm, was there a motion on?
I, I, I appreciate the frank discussion.
Yes, it was a great discussion, uh, thank you. Now we move to our session of public comment, we stand reset, and if you tell me before you spoke on two days.
Yes, once you spoke on two days.
Thank you, ma'am. Please say your name.
John Miller, I guess that's what he's on the dormant fund, however, we have 131,563 dollars that we had no idea we had, and how long can we have that money just sitting around? I mean, if that is from the health department, what other department do we have dormant?
We've already addressed that issue, and.
I mean, that's working here, unfortunately, he got up, and at the time, they left, I really am furious, how we had 131,563 dollars and 90 cents.
Well, what we have is basically Kerry being the new administrator, we had another fund in the sheriff's department that was dormant for like about 12 years, something like that. When I heard that, I asked, start looking for dormant funds in every department, okay, and we started. That's where this came up, so, and nobody asked them to look, nobody knew to look. What happened this time, let's be clear, is that somebody gave you about 100, started right here, you got busy, you forgot about it.
We're talking water and we're talking money.
We're talking water and money, it's an analogy, okay? So every four years or every two years, basically what happens, we have new people coming and going, so the shuffle of business, unfortunately, it got sidelined, but we're addressing that issue this year now, we are saying, look for every dormant fund, I can't address what happened prior to 2025, but I can tell you every dormant fund is out there, we're gonna find them.
So you found two so far?
Two so far, we're still in.
No, there's been one or two, we've had those for many, many years, there's always those, that happens.
No.
Well, this is a lot.
Well, some of them, all that's my understanding, one fund's created also for grants, so sometime he and Ram was going into a specific account or a specific fund, and then the grant stopped, so then that account kind of like disappeared, so it was only made for grants. So I think that was one of the ones that were from the health department, or maybe that was the sheriff one, where it was a specific.
It was the sheriff.
It was the sheriff, where it was specifically for a grant, and the grant no longer existed. So I think that that's why, like.
This is exactly what happened with the sheriff.
Yeah, so I mean, those funds are generally, I think, created for a purpose that might be temporary or to serve a practical function at that time, but yes, I know there are auditors on.
It's just, it's convenient to me that people are pulling some of their funding and all of that, around 131,000. I follow you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment, full of comment, on anything full time.
My name is Mike, I'm from, over by Queens High School. I came with the dad center, just any information, if I came on.
They're recording, so.
You can take that if you want. So, thank you for very kind, and that is only like your consulting.
Oh, then, yeah, that's why I said that, I think, one of the things I stipulated in the very beginning of this whole dad center concern is that we, the council, we don't make that decision, that's a commission decision, so that's why I was stated tonight, that by approving his money, it was in no way, shape or form saying that we had promised, so, as part of the process of his hiring, that we need.
The other thing I had was, I've come to a couple of these meetings, I heard Mr. Stowe say about SB one, and I'm wondering how that's going to affect.
A little bit, sir.